Are we live?
We are.
Hello, everybody. Hi. Hello. Hello. Hi.
Need a gavel.
Sorry that I, no, I don't need a gavel.
No.
So, in the interest of keeping us all on track, we're gonna get going at 6:30. And just a reminder, all these microphones are live and we are streaming this for folks watching at home. So if you want to speak, I encourage you to share microphones so that your sentiments can be caught on video for posterity and for the folks watching at home. I want to welcome everyone to this workshop with the Lincolnville Select Board. The purpose of tonight's workshop is to, in part, review the Select Board's ongoing evolution and conversation regarding the care and maintenance of the LIA building, which has been going on for well, well over, well, for a very long time, but with this concentrated conversation for over a year. But more importantly, it is to give an opportunity to listen and to have an open conversation with people who have knowledge of and care of this building and also with our individuals on the Budget Committee, who we work in partnership with, to take very good care of all of our hard-earned tax dollars. So, I would like to have everyone keep in mind, I would like to wrap this up by 8:00 PM. So, keeping that in mind, I will stop talking. And I would like to, perhaps, starting with Mr. Plas, go around and brief introductions, and then I will leave it in the capable hands of our town administrator to give a brief history. So if I could start with you, Mr. Plas, just an introduction and keep it short.
I'm Bob Plas, President of the LIA, and obviously we have a big decision to make and we have a lot of interest, so we'll see what happens.
And I'm John Williams, I'm on the Budget Committee.
Larry DiGiovanni and Peggy DiGiovanni from Slapp City Road, LIA.
Robin Tarantino, Budget Committee.
Diane Allen, Budget Committee.
Jason Denison.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Sally, yeah. Board Director.
Karen Longwear from West Lincolnville, and just an interested citizen and friend to members of the Historical Society.
Tony Parker, Treasurer of the Lincolnville Historical Society.
Diane O'Brien, President of the Historical Society.
Carrie Schwall, Chair of the Lincolnville Budget Committee.
Rosie Carey, Vice President, Historical Society.
Dave Barrow, Selectman.
Jonathan Fishman, Selectman.
Lady Dunn, Selectman.
Kurt Leit, Selectman.
Josh Garrison, Selectman.
And I'm Amanda Austin, I'm the Project Architect to this point.
Dave Kenny, Town Administrator.
Peter Hartel, Resident and Member of LIA.
Deanna Hartel, Member of LIA, Lincolnville Women's Club, and Garden Club.
Wait, tell us who you are. Tell us who you are.
Oh, I'm the Wipe Ross, Lincolnville. I own Lincolnville Real Estate, Lincolnville Fine Arts Gallery down at Lincolnville Beach. Historical Society Board Member, Historical Board Member. That's our office. Okay, thanks, Rosie.
And so David, I'll leave it in your hands to give us a little brief history and synopsis.
Sure. I've been tasked with providing a brief history and synopsis of the situation. I'm gonna pass these over to Bob, he's gonna pass them around. Hopefully, we have enough. I'm not gonna bother to read it to everybody, because that's not why you're here, and I know we have other focuses. But very quickly, the land was acquired by the inhabitants of School District Number Seventeen in Lincolnville in October of 1856 from Nathan and Maria Knight. The plaque on the existing building appears that the main portion was erected on the site in or about 1892. In 19, so I'm moving quickly and jumping over, just hitting a few of the highlights in the last hundred and fifty, sixty years. In 1931, town meeting considered an article regarding allowing the lower schoolroom at the beach to be used by people of the community for a community house until they needed it again for school. And that was voted and approved to allow the citizens of the beach to use that for such a purpose, and we believe that citizens of the beach ultimately morphed into the Lincolnville Improvement Association. Since that time, the earliest reference we could find, once the building was, or portion of the building was allowed for community use, in 1934, we started to raise some monies outside of the school monies for uses. And that has continued periodically since. The school, we believe, closed there in 1947. And several additions have been made to the building. Amanda's gonna touch on these. But, storage room, kitchen sometime believed to be in the sixties, and the second-floor office space for the Historical Society honor about 2001. In 2011, the town actually entered into a formal lease agreement with the Lincolnville Improvement Association for the building. The LIA had maintained the building inside and out since they occupied the building, and that continued with that lease. When that lease was coming to its end, the folks from the Lincolnville Improvement Association asked that the town, once again, take on some of the maintenance responsibilities for the building, primarily the outside, the exterior envelope of the building. The Board of Selectmen also got a list of things that were of concern from the LIA in terms of items that needed some attention or were thought to need some attention, rather than piecemealing it, not knowing what they were getting themselves into or the town into. The Selectmen went to town meeting and asked for an appropriation of funds to have a building evaluation done. And that, in January of last year, that was approved. Town meeting approved the purpose of hiring consultants to provide a building assessment for the town. That same month, the Selectmen hired Two-A Architects, Gartley and Dorsky Engineers, Bennett Engineering, Albertson Builders and Services, and Air Quality Management to look at the various components of the building, which are listed there. I'm gonna let it to read to you. And that was a brief history of 160 years of the LIA building and the town's involvement. Obviously, we now have the building analysis and assessments done, which were presented to the Board late last year. And the Selectmen, after reading hundreds of pages of stuff, said, "We need to get some more, involve some more community people, get some more input before any decision is made as to how and when we move forward as a community on this." And so that's a very brief synopsis. I'm gonna turn it over to Amanda, who's more skilled in these public presentations than I am, and she is gonna give the presentations of the findings of all the consultants, and what they looked at, what they didn't look at, and where we stand and what the cost might be.
So, I'm Amanda Austin from Two-A Architects. As I said, we have been working pretty steadily over the last year to analyze the building. We came back to the Board originally in May with the original assessment. We did a little bit more work to discover some of the structural elements of the building and did a little selective demo to uncover some of the structure. And then, as Dave said, we came back late last year to present both an estimate and kind of an overview of those structural findings. Many of you were at the tour, but I'm just gonna give a brief recap of some of the conditions we looked at on site and walk you through some of the things we found. And again, this is very brief. As Dave said, there was a lot of detail beyond this, but as a general overview, here's what we did and what we found. So, as Dave, again, as Dave mentioned, we had ourselves as the architects, we had structural engineer, we had mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and someone come in to look at the hazardous materials as well. When we look at these things, we're looking at the condition, we're looking at the building code, which addresses life safety, and we're looking at accessibility. Those are the major factors for us. And a building of this age is normally in this condition. There isn't anything here that probably would be unanticipated, but it was our job to kind of recap that and take a look at it from our perspective. The, I'll start with the hazmat survey. So, they looked for lead, asbestos, and mold in particular, and found all three. Mainly, they found lead in the paint, a tiny bit of asbestos, nothing, various pipe covering under the sink in the toilet room, and some mold, as would also be expected in a damp basement space. So, nothing too unexpected there. The architectural work we did, there certainly were items related to life safety. There, the exits aren't wide enough, the stair isn't, needs to be addressed due to the chairlift that's there. But the general building condition, the roof requires replacement. The original thing that sort of flagged people's attention was the condition of the siding and the trim, and that certainly needs to be cared for. Some of the things that might not be clear to everyone would be that the range would typically have a hood system on it. The one that's there isn't fully compliant, but there's a workaround for that. There's no ADA access into the building, which is an issue, and getting through the front door and into the main portion of the first floor is really quite a priority. And there's no toilet room for use that's accessible anyway while you're there. Once we looked at all of that, we came back to the Select Board and it was decided to also look at the costs, at least, of replacing the foundation. The foundation isn't crumbling, but it's not perfect. It also is allowing in moisture, it's uninsulated, there's no vapor barrier across the floor or up the side walls. So there were issues there that we chose to address in the, in the estimate. And for the, from the structural perspective, their probably most significant concern was the insufficient structure for the second floor. That is greatly undersized, and we have looked at a way to address that with really minimal intrusion into the space, including just new beams and columns in the first floor in the existing location of the columns. And then, the other issues include things like the attic and providing support for those columns in the foundation area, the crawl space area. From mechanical, electrical, plumbing, the electrical and plumbing issues were quite minor. The mechanical system, the furnace is nearing the end of its useful life, and looked at priced options for replacing that. So taking all of those things and many more into consideration, we went out for an estimate on the work we'd done so far, and that was done by Albertson Builders. And we approached that really as a full scope of work, not breaking the project into smaller pieces or anticipating phasing, but for the sake of efficiency and, and looking at a complete project, we looked at everything that we've just listed and everything else is included in the report. So the costs for that were broken into two options. I think one thing I neglected to mention was that we had proposed in the estimate to replace all of the siding, all of the windows, and all of the trim. And in the estimate, we looked at that from two perspectives. We looked at it from the more historically correct way of at least clad wood windows and wood siding, or the lesser option of vinyl windows and vinyl siding, which I think is a topic of conversation for tonight, is the desire to preserve the building or to look at it from a low-maintenance perspective, and how do we, how would we do that? The cost came back for that upper end at about $624,000. And if you're looking at a square foot cost, this is about a 3,000-square-foot building, so that brings us in just about $200 a square foot, a little over. And then the lesser option of vinyl siding came in around $580,000. So, as, again, preliminary estimate, without the full design work being done, that's where we landed. Let's see, what else? So, yeah, so that, again, that included the full scope, the full replacement of the foundation, which means lifting the building, setting it down on a new foundation, and all of those structural improvements. It did not include the hood system for the kitchen, and it assumed that we would be able to find a time to do this during warmer months. So there are a couple of exclusions there that could be significant, but all in all, for an early estimate, I think we've encapsulated as much as we possibly could. I think we'll, we can get to schedule a little later, but I can answer any questions on that, or we can, sure.
Is there a contingency built into that estimate?
There is, there's a contractor contingency built in at 10%, so that's included in there. We would always advise the client to consider their own contingency above that.
Do you have an estimate of the cost of the foundation?
Yeah, so that was broken out, and I think any of this can be made available to you all, but the, let's see, so lifting and setting the building was 62 grand, I'm gonna speak in rough numbers, and the foundation, the concrete, was 28. There was also some excavation involved, because one of the issues with that building is that the crawl space is very shallow, and so we went ahead and included some excavation to provide at least four feet of headroom for people to get down there and work and check the building's condition. So, so that excavation was $41,000, and providing the proper drainage around the foundation. So that's a significant portion of the work, yeah.
What about setting it on page layout?
We didn't look at that. I suppose that would be an option. We didn't look at that, though. Yeah, we certainly could. It would, well, yeah, we could consider that.
And to just interject, the, in order to save ourselves trees and dollars, we didn't photocopy any of these reports. They're all available on the town's website now, right from the homepage under Announcements and announces this meeting. If you click on that, there's more stuff than anybody would ever care to read. Also have a few copies here, so that we can make sure that we gave one to Bob for the LIA and make sure to give you one, Diane, to take you, or whoever from the Historical Society. And they are available here for anybody that wants to read them in paper version in future. Sorry.
Were the writing numbers worked up on, perhaps raising the existing building and building a new facility?
We, we didn't. We looked at this purely as a renovation project, and I think part of the conversation tonight is to frankly discuss all the options that might be available to the town, yeah.
Having my, we never discussed that with you, but I thought, I thought this, we did say something about putting people, just to strike it, and I think you were commenting that that historically has been like a more expensive option.
I think we did start a conversation like that, but we felt it better to have more people who were directly involved before we started talking about stuff.
But it's, but we started going down that road, 'cause it started to, you know, it begs the question, for sure.
Any more questions for Amanda?
I just wondered, is it habitable or is it safe right now for meetings for the Lincolnville Women's Club, LIA, for anybody in the near future or in the summer?
Yeah. We, we have thought about that quite a bit. The second floor, our structural engineer has recommended that the occupant load be kept to the minimum and that certainly nothing else be added upstairs. And if there is anything of any great weight, that it be removed if it's not necessary for the structure, for the use. As far as meeting on the first floor, that, we don't see that as an issue. There are certainly technical life safety issues. The doors aren't wide enough if they were built today. There aren't exit signs, there are things like that. But for those of you that are familiar with the building and using the building with those that are familiar, it's not unsafe, yeah.
What, what is the limit for the, the upstairs, when you say keep it to a minimum?
I think the structural engineer would prefer that there weren't more than a handful of people up there.
A handful being?
I don't, I don't have a number. Five? I, you know, I don't know. She didn't assign that, but...
Well, we could provide you with a copy of the, the structural engineer's report, and she does get into load limits and that sort of thing, but...
Because we have visitors in the summer, and usually not more than a handful at a time, so, you know, we're wondering if we can continue with our summer visitors.
Just from your experience, a new build is, technically, how much per square foot a build can?
Well, of course, it varies widely. The last couple of estimates we've seen come in have been in the 175-square-foot range for a building kind of similar to this, an office building, commercial, certainly nothing added to it, no extra detail to it, fairly standard commercial construction.
And then the estimate that you have per square foot to renovate is how much?
This one's about 200.
200.
But I, I would say to that, too, that, and it's not dissimilar to the equation we went through in looking at this building, when you're looking at a new building, you're also taking on a lot of uncertainties. Where's the property? What's the right piece of property? How much does it cost? All those things, you know, are coming to play as well. So there are pros and cons to each situation.
While we're talking about new build, new building, so we may or may not wanna go there, but I was trying to think, my wife with me, trying to think, how, how to, like, it's expensive, what you quoted.
Yeah.
How could you combine saving the historical value and a place for all the artifacts with another function? So, two in one, right? And I know someday we're gonna build another firehouse. Could you build a firehouse there and give a floor to the historical aspect as well, the assembly aspect, and the kitchen, and just kind of try to combine those two projects? So that's just, that was the thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
That particular piece of property as well, if, if we're kind of getting into some of the discussion around options, that particular piece of property is quite long and narrow. So if you were to look at it with the current setbacks and lot coverage requirements, which I don't remember off the top of my head what those are in Lincolnville, but it's not that big of a site.
It's really tight.
You, that, the back, the north wall of the building is less than 10 feet from the property line, which for a commercial building, we wouldn't do in any case, regardless of setback requirements. So, that lot itself would be a challenge to try and fit this much building on again.
So I think it's fair to open it up at this point. I mean, I think questions will naturally come up, but we certainly would love to hear any and all ideas with regards to this very large number. And I have heard quite a few times, "Well, why can't we just piecemeal it?" Or, "Why can't we just do this and just do, you know, take little parts and pieces?" Or, basically approach it as if you were going to be doing repairs on your own home. And I just would remind everyone that the policies and procedures that we are obligated to consider when we take a project on like this are very different from the decision-making that you might make if it were your house. So that's part of the reason why we have been working with Amanda and her firm and the professionals that she brings with it, is because we simply didn't want to start throwing good money after bad in starting to take siding off and opening Pandora's Box and finding we've inadvertently committed ourselves to a $600,000 project when we thought we were going to be spending $12,000 on siding. So, I think everything and anything is on the table at this point for us to discuss. So I open it.
Okay, I'll, I'll start.
Yes.
Give you my, my spiel. One of the things about this town that I think is really special, makes it special, is our, is our old buildings. And we have some old historic buildings in our town, and certainly this, this is one of them. The Grange, there's King David's Lodge. Does anybody know about that? And we have two old churches. And all these buildings need, need care. This one, the town owns, those others are privately owned or not, not private, own them and maintain them. I think it's one of the things that does make our town special are these buildings. And this one, it's actually the only town-owned meeting space in town that we have. I mean, we've got Community Building, but the church owns that, the Grange, Grange owns that, you know, the library, the library owns that. The town, the town doesn't have a community gathering place that I can think of that they support, which I think is, is an argument for it to be maintained. And it, it serves a couple of functions. It's certainly the only place at the beach where people can meet. Certainly, I suppose the LIA could come up here and meet at the Community Building or something, but that's always been that, the center of that community, and it is part of our community. The beach is the other, the other half of our, our two communities. The Historical Society certainly is well ensconced up there, and, I mean, if we have to move out, we move out and deal with that, that could be a whole other, a whole other issue. But I guess I'd like to see, maybe with some combination of, maybe there could be some sort of private fundraising like we did for the school. We certainly raised a lot more money than the state gave us to build that school, it was raised privately, and possibly that could, that could happen to help alleviate this, this cost. I, I don't think it makes any sense to piecemeal it either. I think you do it or you don't do it, and you just, I think you bite the bullet if you're going to, going to fix it. There's some things that you mentioned, Amanda, like the kitchen, work around the kitchen, and some of these things, they don't all have to be done. You don't have to do the siding. I mean, you pointed out that a couple of the walls of the sides are okay, and there may be ways to, to bring this cost down a bit. And then that decision about vinyl versus wood and all that is another thing. But it's an important part of our town, and, you know, when, when you think about a new building, its place, which, I mean, nobody's saying that's gonna happen, but that's, that's a possibility, just for a minute, picture it, whatever it would be, in place of that wonderful old building that was a school and has housed, you know, community gatherings for 50, 60 or more years. I think it would be a big loss if we gave it up. So I'm strongly in favor of seeing us figure out a way to, to finance it. We have beautiful facilities in this town. We've got this great town office, we've got a wonderful fire station, our new library, we've got nice facilities. We should be able to keep this, too.
Just to dovetail on that, your comment about value engineering, the quote, is that something that you've thought about? You know, you can kind, get a consultant, value engineer, the quote, to see how much you can save? I don't know if you're a company that...
We generally do help in that process. We haven't gone that far yet. I think we wanted to have this conversation first before we got in further... in further into the details of those sorts of options, but yes.
I mean, the, the ugly underlying truth of all of this conversation are individual dollars stacked up together to add to larger sums of dollars. And the uh amount of money that the voters of Lincolnville approved for us to spend, we, we had, we've spent those to do the work that we've done so far. And Amanda has been wonderful at continuing to work with us, but uh um those dollars have been spent. So any additional think dollar signs. So, yeah. Yes, Rosie.
So, um, um if this committee or the committee or the selectmen or whatever decided to move ahead with, with spending X amount of dollars, would that go in front of the voters?
If it involved an appropriation of money, yes. If money fell from, out of your pocket and you wanted to gift it to the town, the town has the ability to accept the gift without certain gifts and grants without going back to the voters. But if we're gonna spend taxpayer dollars.
Yes.
Or either whether it be tax dollars or monies that we have in savings and some other, it would definitely, it's gonna go to the town.
Gonna go to the town. Alright, scenario. So we want to salvage the building, restore it. But, and we came up with a figure, we'll just use one figure, six hundred thousand, present, presented that to the town to vote on. Shall the town to spend six hundred thousand on the LIA to, and the, I'm just using a scenario, and the voters voted that down. What's, what's the next pro- what would be the, what's the next step on that?
Uh like anything that the voters choose not to do, everybody has to stop, regroup. Obviously, we can't spend money we don't have. And the selectmen would have to decide what, if anything, they wish to then present to the voters. Lincolnville's got a quite a history of presenting an idea, people voting two days, two years later, voting on the same issue or a similar issue uh back and forth. But ultimately, the Board of Selectmen have no authority to spend money without voter approval. They have no ability to acquire or dispose of assets without voter approval. Certainly can't buy a piece of property or s- transfer ownership of a piece of property without um voter approval. So if a concept gets put forth by the selectmen for consideration by the voters and the voters choose not to go down that path, goes back in the selectmen's laps to say, what do the, what do you wanna do, what do you wanna ask next?
Just wanna put that up there.
Yeah.
Just from a tax perspective too, from the townspeople's mind, how much impact would say six hundred thousand have on the no rate? Any idea would be noticeable or incident?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Uh every dollar's noticeable, Carrie, you know that. Um in all likelihood, if we were to pursue a project of this magnitude and ask the taxpayers to pay the entire bill, um it would most likely be a borrowing uh over a certain period of time. We might take some from savings, but um that would be a, you know, a decision or discussion as, as this moves forward. But if you're looking at, I calculated it, I'm going on seven hundred thousand dollars for twenty years. Um if, there's a couple of different ways to finance it, but you're looking at, you know, forty-five to fifty thousand dollars a year for twenty years. Depending on what we get for an actual interest rate. Um that is no small sum of money, but it's in the big scheme of things, when you start talking, you know, town's budgets, a million to taxpayers, property taxpayers, schools, several million, county's almost a million, fifty thousand. Um let's see, for each mill on the mill rate, we raise approximately four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So it's a couple tenths of a mill. Don't hold me to that. I'm not a successor, but.
Yes.
So my next question, I guess, would be for Amanda in, was, either I didn't hear it or was it figured in for like um the, in a renovation project, the um uh like the historical society's um artifacts and things upstairs, was that figured in, the moving of that stuff out of the building and a storage building to rental, for a storage building to store that stuff on that? So that was not figured in on that?
No, we didn't look at any, we, the only soft costs we looked at, we classified those as soft costs, would have been the fees to get us through the design permitting. So no, no, you're right. No moving, no storage, no legal fees, no, none of that outside of our work was calculated, yeah.
And to clarify too, this is not a complete renovation of the building.
Yes, right.
This is structural. Closed envelope structural, not a complete renovation.
This is, I, I understand that. This is true. I was just thinking that I heard that the roof needed to be replaced.
Yes.
So in replacing the roof, I would think that there are files and papers and, and can't, I I would assume that that stuff would have to be removed from the building in order to do that. So that's where I, that's where I'm coming from.
That's a, that's a point.
Cover machine.
Yeah.
Yeah, Josh.
Yeah, you, you know, this, this project, you're looking at a six-month project. And in essence, and I, I just pulled that maybe out of my memory from something you said.
No, I think you're close, I think, yeah.
And you're talking vacating the building, everybody, and anything that's movable. Otherwise, you're gonna be subject to potential damage or slows down the worker's ability to do, you know.
Absolutely.
So I'm somewhat ignorant to um all the uses of to all the uses of this building. And I would like to hear what exactly, how this building is used by the community.
Well, Historical Society is a museum that's open three days a week throughout the summer. They're all, uh, May, June, June to October, I guess, we're open. We're open any day by appointment. Anyone can come down there. Basically, we, we store things there and, you know, you saw our, pretty much, it's a pretty good archive of the town's history. There's a lot. There's a lot there.
Yeah.
That um, most people, I mean, I, I don't know that all of there. It, it's, there's a lot of stuff. And um computers and, you know, we've got a, a full setup upstairs. So that's that use of, of the building.
Okay.
Why don't you mention something about the addition that we built for our office and our archives?
Well, that's, that's where it is, yeah, in that office, but that's.
But I'm assuming maybe people don't know about.
Yeah, the, there, there's an office and I, I don't know if that, we included that.
Yes.
Um built over the kitchen, that, that we built, um, well, I guess, twenty years ago. And that's where we store a lot of our things, a lot of our stuff.
When you say replacing the roof, are you saying that it needs to be re-shingled or does it need a whole new roofing deck?
We have assumed shingles at this point, particularly on the west side. They're in very poor condition, so there likely could be more than that. But at this point, we've said just recover it. Yeah, yeah. Yes, yes, you're right, right.
Okay, so we've got the?
Yeah, I think Mr. Plas can attest to meetings and things.
Well, I'll answer your question. I have another question, but the building is used by the LIA for meetings, May through October. Uh in the winter, we do rent the building out. It's not uncommon for us to rent that building out six, seven, eight, nine times in the winter. Uh we have family gatherings here. Believe it or not, we have a lot of old timers who grew up here, who don't live here anymore, who'll come back to have their, our family reunions here. So we rent that in the winter for that. Uh we have businesses that come in and rent it. We have Medicare, Blue Cross come in recently. Uh we had another insurance company come in to hold seminars. Uh so it's not unusual to rent it. It's not a building that you close up in October on the downstairs portion, or even on the upstairs now. Visiting, visiting out there. And say it's done. It's not. We heat it year-round, we pay the utilities year-round, we pay the oil year-round. We have it insured for year-round use. And so it's, it's a pretty busy building. And one of the remarks, or one of the reasons that some people make them and come there is because of how old it is. It's historic. Some of the people that come back went to school there. And their families went to school there. Uh one person had a baby delivered there. Uh they came in to have a family reunion. Uh and they come back every year. So there's a lot of things that go on there. Not, I'm telling you, we have a clinic.
We're not gonna build a baby birth again.
That was definitely not.
We have a nursing nurse there. But anyway, the uh I think it would be a shame. And I, I know it's a big undertaking and it's a problem. And it's run a conundrum, but I think we should do everything possible to save that building. Cause there's two ways to think of that building. Either you wanna save it for historical purposes or when you talk about how much you're gonna spend on it, that could change if you don't save it for historical purposes, but just for a meeting place and forget the historical part of it. I mean, that could change. Numbers could change based on that alone. So I, I just think it's a shame. I can't tell you how the town will vote. I'm, I'm an optimist by nature, but sometimes reality takes over too. But the uh, I'd like to know on the figure you gave, I'm gonna use a seven hundred thousand figure, though my God tells me seven fifty, but I'm gonna use a seven hundred figure. How much, what percentage that is for overrun?
So right now, what's in there is a contingency of ten percent for the contractor.
Am I close in using a seven hundred figure?
I think you're close.
Would I be close if I use a seven fifty figure?
I would put, I would um I would say that that would, at least in the numbers we have now, be a good idea to consider that in that the town would want to carry some contingency for things that aren't covered in here yet. Is that the reasonable?
So you're using about seventy thousand for over, overrun? Take the five seventy thousand?
No, cause we, we really, the, the cost estimate is six and a quarter on the high end right now, including the contingency. And we have design costs, construction oversight costs, what I'll call even software costs, advertising costs and legal review and that type of thing. You know, seven hundred's as good a number as it's gonna get, sitting around this table tonight.
It's a, and it's from, it's an emotional thing for some people. It's very emotional. The uh some people will get very emotional with this because the LIA has been really taking care of that building for well over a hundred years. And they have sunk a lot of money, at least a couple hundred thousand dollars in that building, commonly over the years. Over those hundred years or a hundred odd years, easily, cause I counted it when I, I got to a couple hundred thousand. So and recently, there's been some money spent there by the LIA too, in, in the thousands of dollars. So I understand, I understand the situation. I understand the severity of the financial end of the situation. But I think that um we should try and preserve this building. We haven't preserved a lot of buildings in Lincolnville over the years. We have some, but we haven't preserved a lot. We haven't spent a lot of taxpayers' money uh to preserve historical buildings.
That, that's kind of my point, Bob. I, I think that, that, and I, Dave, you and I have talked about the buildings in town and ideas for how that might happen. It, it is, it's a rarity what we've got, what we've got here. I, I can count eight, eight structures, starting with Petunia Park. Um, you know, the bandstand and, and, and the Pride of Leon ones, like the Grange and the churches and so forth. And the, the town ought to be investing something in preservation. And, and many of these organizations are being run by a bunch of old people. I mean, there's, the membership in these organizations tends to be old and, and that's certainly happening in the LIA. I mean, these guys used to paint the building. They can't get on ladders anymore.
Please go get on ladders.
Yeah, well.
Old.
You don't have to mean. So I, I, you, you, you make a good, a good point that, that the, the town could invest something in, could, could think about having that be something that the town does see as a value. It is a value. It is a value to our, if we lose these buildings and this being the one that's the most at risk right now, we lose a lot. We lose a lot of who we are and what, what this town is.
And one last thing, ma'am chairman, I'll be done, but the, the Lincolnville Improvement Association is really a huge part of this town. And we do a lot of things, but our main focus, besides beautification of the beach, et cetera, et cetera, Christmas trees, Christmas parties and all that, which we sponsor, is scholarships. And for years and years, when we spent a lot of money on that building, it was because we couldn't, we didn't spend on scholarships. Now that we really, we've grown as an organization also, but that's our main focus, is to keep the beautification of the town and scholarships. And we give out, we gave out six thousand dollars in scholarships this year, five scholarships for twelve hundred dollars each. And we continue year over year to increase that number uh for our Lincolnville kids. So that, that's our main focus. And we just couldn't, we can't any longer spend, as you know, with the last lease, the town and the LIA share these, the, the building maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. And I would really hate to see a lot of the things that LIA does not be done anymore because we didn't have a home or because some members who are truly tied to LIA because of that building and their families generations ago took care of that building leave. So it's a very, there's a lot to it besides money.
Yes.
Just, just a comment, being a relatively new person to Lincolnville. You know, one thing that struck me when I first moved here are the community spirit that's involved and how the community really gets together and helps one another too. It sounds like, from my perspective, from what I'm hearing, there's a lot of passion about this building and can we capitalize on that by doing some type of fundraiser event to offset the major cost to the institution? I mean, the people that have lived in this town a long time would probably know a lot of people that would be willing to donate money to help preserve that building as well because of the historical significance to it. Uh just as an idea, but I don't know how you would budget something or how that, from the mechanics that I, how you would go forward. Cause you'd have to allocate, you'd have to commit money to get it done.
Yes.
I, again, I'd just like to, I'd like to see uh when you're talking about seven hundred or seven hundred and fifty, I'd like to see about what, how much more that cost would be to get a pod down there or a storage facility and what it's gonna cost to hire people to move both up and low, downstairs, the stuff that's there, out of there and put it in. I'd like, I'd like to see that somewhere in a figure there.
Well, to play the devil's advocate, you feel that that would be the town's responsibility to do?
Um.
Or the renters' responsibility of the town's facilities?
I don't. I'd say that's up for discussion. I'd say that's up for discussion, but.
And just.
But I, I, I mean, so I guess to come back with that, so if, if that would be the case, then then that would be up to the LIA and, and the Historical Society to come up with an estimate on what that's gonna cost.
I, I just wanna give a shout out to the Reentry Center for things like moving stuff out of the building and into a pod. It wouldn't have cost anything if the Reentry Center did it. And I'm a mentor here, so they're always in my mind, but um, you know, it's kind of a win-win.
Looking at a lot of the things, and I'm embarrassed to say for the first time today, a lot of the things that were in there. I'm not sure, no, I'm, I promote the Reentry Center, everyone that's part of it, and thank you very much for all of that. But looking at some of that stuff, I would think one would have to be a little bit of, of a professional to move some of that stuff so as not to damage it. Just saying, it's, a lot of it is of great historic value and I would hate to see something pushed into a pod.
Could, you could, you could make that work with, I mean, there's certainly plenty of.
Yeah.
Just boxes.
Yeah. Just, just, just the consideration of protecting what you got, if, if, if in fact we do go that route.
It could be worked out, I think, but I think that's a good, a good thought of, of having, having some help.
And the other thing, just bringing that up, there's gonna be a lot going on down there. If this, if this is pushed forward, I would think this stuff would have to be stored offsite, not just onsite in a pod. Most likely in a climate controlled area.
One.
Yes.
One last thing to, um, again, this is the town of Lincolnville's Historical Society. It's not a private organization.
But it's its own, its own five oh one C three.
It, it is, but it also, it is the town of Lincolnville's Historical Society.
I have a question. Um, is it time sensitive, all of this? I mean, if, you know, something's so well-witted on money. Just concerned there's gonna be inertia and if nothing happens for like two years, then what will happen structurally to the building?
I, I think from what we found, and we could certainly have that conversation if we thought there was going to be a long extension. But I think from what we found, there wouldn't be a concern about it structurally staying the way it is. That being said, we go back to the restrictions for the second floor. It's still, we're going to eventually have to come back to the, just even the basic question about some of the condition of the siding and the windows and how much are we serving the building by letting those further deteriorate. But as far as safety and use, I wouldn't see it changing that much over the course of a couple of years. And frankly, just between completing the project and getting it approved and all the steps that would be needed from here to there, it's gonna take a while anyway, so we, we'd have to think about that.
Amanda, how long do you feel the roof has before we start seeing issues internally in the building?
Judging from the pictures we've seen, I'm surprised you haven't seen them already. I mean, on the west, and maybe you have, I don't know, but we haven't seen staining on the ceiling that would indicate that. But it's pretty rough. I actually, I have a couple of pictures here if we wanna bring those up.
Yeah, well, Amanda's doing that. If we, if one of my bosses always says, moving with all due municipal speed. If we, even if we fast track something, we're talking, you know, twenty twenty-one for actual physically doing the work. We have no money set aside. These things take time to design, bid, get a contractor. I don't know if anybody's tried to get a plumber or electrician lately, but you know, they're, they're not usually just making long calls.
It's not moss. That's the shingles cracked and.
This is.
It's deteriorated. Yeah. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Uh, looks like one side.
This is, this is the ridge running this way. This is the beach side. That's the non-beach side. And then on that one, it's just, the beach side is on the top half and the non-beach side.
Looks like they replaced the one side.
Yeah, it looks like one side has been replaced.
I suspect that the beach side got done.
Can you see it?
With, well.
The weather would be.
Probably the sun beat on that side, so they did that side. And it didn't on this. And now, you know, it's a constant cycle of back and forth.
And if that was done twenty years ago, those shingles, the, the life of those shingles would be on the side.
Yeah. Maybe you scroll up to the other. This is the, this is where the bell is.
Can you, you can't see that from the ground, can you?
What?
The bell.
You can see the bell.
Yeah, if you get on the.
They have to get away.
The street.
Okay.
Yeah, in the right hands. You can't see that view, but that's what I'm, what we got on the office.
Amanda, if, if, if we were to wait, I mean, we will be waiting, please, in a while.
Sometime, right.
Is there a way to reinforce that floor externally temporarily? In other words, you said that the, the choice run longitudinally.
They do, yeah.
And so you're gonna go across with a couple of.
Right.
Of structural beams. Is there a way to do something into, you know, without actually going into the ceiling, but just, um, in that downstairs room?
Uh.
Putting up something that would be a temporary.
You, you probably could. The trick to that would be getting it transferred all the way down to the basement. Because there's no access in the basement to support whatever post would be supporting the ends of those beams. If that makes, so it.
And that wouldn't be enough?
You might be able to provide some solution, but it's not an effective.
Well, I'm thinking it's as permanent, but to allow us to get through the next cou- you know, few years using our, using our museum.
Yeah. Yeah. We didn't really look at it, but it, without getting into the wall and the foundation, I don't know how you support the exterior wall end of that beam. Yeah, we probably could find something that would help, but it wouldn't be an elegant solution, that's for sure. And it would be difficult to support it in the foundation and the crawl space. So the plan was to actually drop those beams in the space, actually. And the final solution is to have them exposed and then transfer the load down to the foundation. Yeah.
Into the, into the, into the foundation.
So I've heard, um, we've heard some thoughts, a couple of thoughts about, um, funding. Does anyone else have any other thoughts besides putting, you know, basically borrowing the money and asking the townspeople to pay for this building? Yes?
Try to give some thoughts to help prompt others. When I was contemplating funding options, I came up with four, perhaps five, but five is always other. Hoping that others might have suggestions. We have the inhabitants of the town through either saved funds or borrowed funds. Gifts, grants, fundraising. Somebody could start an endowment, I suppose, if somebody was so inclined. But those were the things that immediately popped into my mind. We've heard many of them also mentioned earlier.
Do, do we know about grants? Certainly there are people who do grants.
There's a list, GoFundMe.
There we go.
Throw it out there. I mean.
Yeah.
I don't, why, you know, Lincolnville.
GoFundMe.
GoFund, like, you know, Lincolnville Improvement Association is looking to save the town's building. It's the only building that we've had. You know, like, all the stuff you guys were just saying. And throw it out there and you never know.
See what happens. See what hits the wall.
I mean, you might get a hundred bucks. You might get a hundred thousand. I don't know.
Many people can, in this room, can probably recall the effort that went through with the capital campaign for the school.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
That you talked about. And how many different ideas, you know, that was a grand committee that was going, when I arrived at the room. And they hit all sorts of different avenues. We had somebody here whose mother was very generous and donated a piece of land that got raffled off. So if anybody happens to have, you know, an acre or two up on High Street that I wanna have raffled off. You know, there's, there's many different things. And I think that was part of the reason this selectman wanted to get, you know, a group of stakeholders together so that everybody could have the same basis of understanding of the situation that we're all faced with. And then, you know, somebody's gonna come up with an epiphany to get us through.
And you could write an article if you are.
We need money.
Yeah. Well, certainly at some point. You can open the door.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Is the building on the historic register?
It is not, but I don't think we've ever actually approached them specifically for that building. And, well, Connie mentioned that the front has been changed, but then, uh, that, it just, you never know what they're going to say. What's been changed is there used to be two doors, one for the girls and one for the boys. And then they took out the one, when they put in the bathroom.
I think it usually depends what percentage of the exterior's changed for, to qualify, yeah.
Something like that, but I, I think basically it's pretty much what it was.
Okay.
So that's a possibility, but that doesn't get us money.
I can.
It can, or if you're on the register?
I, I don't know that much about it. When I was, when I was brainstorming with others on how to save the Mary E. Taylor building, that was part of it, the historic tax credits and, and that kind of thing. But I have no idea i- if that would apply to this building.
Yeah, I don't know.
I would think that it would be more attractive to the taxpayers as a whole. Let's say if this is a seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, if the ask to the taxpayers was only three hundred and fifty or something like that.
That was, I was about to, yeah.
So if there was a, something similar to a capital campaign to raise fifty percent or two thirds or a third or how, whatever the ratio is, I would think it would be more, I know it would be to me, uh, as a taxpayer. But I think it would be more, you know, more, um, appealing.
Yeah.
If that, if that's the type of thing that could happen.
Happens, right.
I'd like to see that. I'd like to also see what would have to be done to check and see if this is actually a building that can be on a historical register. I mean, numerous people have asked me, what's the historical value of this building anyway? Well, a lot of old people have met there. And I can't answer that question because I'm, although I've been here pretty much all my life.
Well, now you've seen the Historical Society.
Well, I, I have, I have, but I, I can't honestly answer that question. Obviously, this type of information is outdated. But when you have a taxpayer staring in your face, say, why should I? Is it really that historical value or is it just a stor- a historical value in a couple of people's minds?
Well, you can say that about.
And that's kinda, that's brutal to hear.
But you can say that about anything, about any old thing.
You can, you can.
And say, what's the value of this to them? And, and of course, to some people, it's of no value. And.
Unfortunately, that's, unfortunately, and it's sad to say that, but you're right.
Yeah.
Well, especially sitting in our chairs here, I mean, it could, it's, phew, boy, it's, it's, it's forty-eight percent, fifty-two percent any, any given day of the week on any given subject here in this town. And, and for all of the people and all of the sentiment and the emotion and the experience, there could be three times that watching the evening news at home that don't even know that the LIA building exists. Um, and those people have to fall under our consideration as well. So just for the sake of being the devil's advocate, does it make sense for the town to continue to own this building? Or would there be more power in it being owned by the Historical Society? So the Historical Society or another organization, I don't, I, this is not a formed idea, just. It, is there, what are people's thoughts on the value of clearly the historic nature of the town owning and caring for the building in partnership with the various organizations? But would there be value in unencumbering the building from, from our process? And all of the hurdles that we are obligated to go through?
I would like to say, the town that I lived in for most of my working life in Massachusetts went that route with our Old Town Hall because of similar situation where it needed so much. And, um, and it was very successful in, in our town because you had, you know, a group of, core group of people that came together that, um, took on the project and did the fundraising and things like this. And they would come to the town at annual meeting for components to see if the town wanted, you know, kind of looked at the town as a partner with them, but they were kind of running in. And the town was pretty good, the town's people, cause I was thinking about what you've been saying. It was successful in our town because it was seen as this group of really committed people is working on this and let's show them some support and, you know, give them thirty thousand dollars in this year's budget towards the project that they're working on, these kinds of things. And the other thing, when you first mentioned the cost and you said it was about two hundred dollars per square foot and then someone else asked, well, what's the cost per square foot for new construction? And you said it was kind of similar for a commercial building. I think that would be a persuasive argument for the, the chunk of people in town who don't know the LIA exists kind of thing too. I mean, if they're, and if we were gonna still own it, the idea of, well, we need this space for these concrete functions and the cost is not arguably different to renovate versus build new and build new brings up a horn's nest of setbacks and all this. You can make, you know, a great argument. And my last thing that I wanted to mention was, and someone here I'm sure can, can explain to me, when you are a registered building, I've always been under the impression that that also could include a lot of restrictions and tying of your hands as far as what you can then do to the structure. So I wasn't sure if, if it was, if we got it registered, if that might not be tying one hand behind our backs as far as things like.
That's a good point.
Handicapped accessibility and changing doors and.
Oh.
I can make a couple of points on that. Um, being on the national register in and of itself does not place a lot of restriction on the building. It's when you're seeking the tax credits for the building that you are often restricted on what you can do. You're highly restricted. So, uh, the other piece I have never honestly had experience with is trying to get tax credits for a public entity. I've done that for nonprofits and that essentially means that someone else owns the building and you lease it from them. They get the tax credits. It's their benefit. I'm assuming it might sort of work similarly here. There might be some investment that would have to hold those tax credits. But, so it's the tax credit piece that often places the restrictions. The flip side of that is having the building recognized as historically significant can offer some benefit from a life safety building code perspective because you're trying to preserve the, whatever integrity remains of the building and not have to make quite so many adjustments to provide up-to-date life safety features. So it can go either, it can go either way. Yeah.
Quick, uh, to just dovetail on your conversation a little bit. From a demo perspective too, I mean, that is a price per square foot as well. I had no idea what that would be to demo renewal. So it's almost, would be a push probably, I would think, between building new and renovating, probably about two hundred per square foot.
It's, we're actually, we've just been weighing these options on another project actually. And, um, the, the demo, the demo, the further building excavation that's needed for a new building, the utilities that have to come in, the new septic system, all, all of those also stack up. So it, it, it's really hard to say. It's kind of case by case, depending on the site and the, the building you're actually building as to what is more or less expensive. You're right. Yeah.
I do wanna just, just put one thing out there, so it's in everyone's head, that, um, there is an opportunity cost if we spend seven hundred fifty thousand dollars renovating the building. That could be used for other things in our community. It's a lot of money. And perhaps. And perhaps if, if it were all on the taxpayers to fund it, would the town as a whole be better served spending that money on something else? Just something to keep in mind that it is a lot of money and it could be used for other purposes.
Well, and certainly if we could make an argument for a partnership, you know, rather than at, you know, going to the taxpayers and asking for the full freight plus interest essentially. 'Cause we could, we really couldn't bear the burden of trying to ask the taxpayers to raise that in one budget season. I mean, we don't spend that much money on ourselves. That, yeah, that would be too much. But I think thinking outside the box could be, could be really great. Thinking of alternative ownership structures could potentially be good also. We have a little less than twenty minutes left together tonight. I'm just curious to kind of go around the room and hear where people are. I mean, there, there's a lot to digest and we've been sitting with this for a while. So I definitely want to give everyone, not on the select board, an opportunity to just kind of throw, throw ideas out there. And then I would ask for everyone to leave this meeting and to continue to, to think because this is certainly not the last conversation we're going to be having about this. But it would be advantageous for us and our planning going into the winter to be able to start in a direction because, as I love to say to David, with all due municipal speed, I mean, months fly by for us because we can only get our business done in a public forum like this. So I would love to hear any other, any other thoughts, yeah.
Listening to you, David and Amanda, it appears as though the LIA is somewhat hamstrung by the fact that we have to adhere now to all the municipal requirements and constraints, you know, the ADA, et cetera. And I was wondering, Amanda, can you shed a light on if, if this, um, there was sort of an ownership transfer to an association or to a nonprofit, would there be less constraints in terms of the renovation? Because when we were first starting out, we talked about how homes can be done by homeowners at a certain cost, whereas a municipality or governmental agency has to follow everything to the T to, you know, observe all proper regulations. So just, if you have any insight into that, that would be helpful.
The short answer is no, it wouldn't make a difference. The, the life safety issues, the ADA applies, the life safety issues and the condition issues are the same no matter who owns the building. The ADA is slightly more restrictive for towns than it is for private entities, including nonprofits. But actually, the biggest restrictions aren't even applicable to this project. So no, unfortunately, these issues exist in this building really no matter who owns it. You might have more flexibility in some of the other ways we've discussed. So where the funding comes from or the speed at which you choose to move or how you choose to go about the project. But unfortunately, the codes apply to any entity.
I had one quick thought, which was in terms of, you know, brainstorming about how to raise money or to, the other end of that is I always think about these conversations I have about, you know, alternative energy, solar powered renewable energy, and it always starts with conservation. And you had mentioned, you know, what if you put the thing on a slab instead of excavate it out? That, and I, it immediately made me think, oh, well, now with heat pumps, you know, you don't necessarily have to have a boiler in the basement. You could end up, you could put it on a slab, save yourself a bunch there. Heat with, you know, heat pumps, which is just an engineering question, you figure out what you need where. I mean, so, and, and then looking at the roof, I was thinking, well, clearly at one point they replaced one half the roof and left the other. Maybe it's time to, you know, maybe it's time to replace another half of the roof instead of, because that one side looked okay. So my, my thinking is like, maybe in this process, uh, you know, some brainstorming on not cutting corners, like not doing it half-assed or, 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 you know, clearly it needs to be structurally addressed as, as fully as possible. And it, but are, are there, you know, that's just two little examples maybe that where you could maybe save a good chunk of cash without cutting a corner that would be structurally important. So, you know, and may, and maybe if there, if, you know, as the LIA or whatever group is looking at that, you know, looking at through that lens as well, could be.
I think when we, when we looked at the estimating, we definitely made an effort to look at the whole thing so that it would be possible for someone to look through this estimate and say that the siding is this much, the windows are this much.
Right.
At least to give that big picture. That being said, parsing it out becomes somewhat difficult because you're, if you're lifting the building, you're making changes to the plumbing and the electrical work, for example. So just, for example, doing the foundation work, even if it's a slab, whatever the solution is.
Right.
Parsing it out is, is difficult. But I think we, and that applies to almost everything in the building, it's tied together, obviously. But, um, yeah, so, so that piece becomes difficult. But I think to the other points about, do we do all the siding? Do we actually replace the windows? Is that the right decision? Those are all yet to be decided.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's some flexibility there, yeah, I think. And still being respectful and maintaining the building without cutting corners.
Yeah.
Yes.
So my comment, last one for the night would be the, it's basically about the Historical Society and that it, it is, it is one of the major backbones of the town. And it's not a, it's not a wealthy organization. We operate on shoestring. And the sad part, which Diane already brought out, and also about other organizations in town is we're old and we're tired. And we're working, you know, some of the people that really put this on the map, they're pretty, they're pretty much burned out. Sorry about that, but they, they burned, they, they burned the candle at both ends on this. And so that's, again, you know, I continually hear David saying, we're looking for members for Conservation Commission, da-da-da. Well, the Historical Society is desperately looking for people with some pizzazz and some giddy up and go to come in because we're, we're dragging, we're dragging. We, we've worked out, we're tired.
I wanna follow that one, I've been trying to keep my mouth shut, but it didn't work. One thing's been running through my mind through this whole meeting tonight, looking around this room. And we're all, in the time that the loan will be paid off, seventy-five percent of us won't be here. I'm not picking on anybody, but let's, let's just, you know, myself and you. How can we, how can we make this attractive to the younger people that are in this town with families, with groups coming up, that they would find some use of this building so that they would take an interest in it and they would be the new generation coming along to take over where you guys have all done everything over the years? I mean, I don't have an answer for that. My wife and I were talking about this before, before the trip out here. That's what got me, got me going on this. And I mean, it's, it's a wonderful little building and it's used for a lot of great things. But how can we make it enticing so that people will keep it up, keep using it so that it will find a use and find, find a purpose in this town? I, I don't see that purpose lasting twenty years. I mean, the, the stuff that's stored there will still be there, but who's gonna go see it? I mean, I, I hate to, I hate to be negative and I, but I think that, I think it can be done. I don't know how to do it, but I think it's something we ought to consider and try to think of a good reason to get people using that building for things that maybe it's not used for now, but that would be get them in the door, get them interested, get them liking it. I don't, I don't have an answer for it. Most of the ones, and I've got three or four, but most of the ones I have, I have more negatives to it than I have positives. So I could see reasons why we wouldn't wanna do that. Got a group of guys I work with that love to have a place to go play poker once a month. But the things that go, I mean, they would take very good care of the building at the beginning of the thing, but I don't know how well they would be at the end. So I don't know if wives have killed him yet, but, you know, but that, that sort of thing. Can we, can, can we find a purpose? And with that purpose, maybe some different sources of dollars than what, where we have them coming from now? I've got questions, no answers, sorry.
You're in good company. Any other follow-up thoughts or questions? David, any? Anything bubbled to the surface where you were before?
I am so glad that I'm not a policy center. And I don't envy anybody that's elected to the Board of Selectmen or the Budget Committee in trying to formulate a plan to put forward to voters for consideration. This, this will be a challenging issue for the community and it's gonna take the community to step forward to do it, if it's gonna be done. You know, I, I look at other positive examples that have occurred during my time here of Capitol campaign for the school, what the Historical Society and the library folks did with the library. I mean, there's just, with the folks that stepped up and paid for the bandstand after the bicentennial had come and gone. And yet we had a pretty good substantially large bill that needed to be paid. It never ceases to amaze me what the community will do if they want to. It's gonna, if, if this is something that the community wants, it's gonna have to step up and do it.
Gary, you're still Chair of the Budget Committee? Is this on your upcoming, an upcoming?
Well, we're meeting tomorrow night, so.
Perfect.
The first, well, second one for this fiscal year.
Yeah, okay.
Tomorrow, basically, you're gonna look at the Provider Agency stuff, but we can put this on the agenda.
Yeah, I think we'd all be really curious to hear the budding conversation from the Budget Committee. Any final thoughts from select board members?
I'd just like to respond to the being old and tired. I think that, my husband and I have been here about a year and a half and we fall in love with a new build. And I think that even if you are old and tired, that there's still that spirit that is really, could, could inspire a lot of young people if they could just get involved. And I know that they're busy, they don't have the kind of time that we do. But I think, I think it's important to try, to try and create.
Well, and, and the other thing, remember, is young people get old again. I mean, you know, we were once too busy to think about stuff 'cause we were raising families or whatever and working and, huh?
In this case, the young people are in their fifties.
Well, but, yeah, but we, I mean, the, the ones that we're looking at now is uninterested in, you know, it's just like as you get older, you get, you do tend to get more interested in, in history and in, in things like that. I mean, it's just, it's just a natural progression. So you could just, I think I take what you're saying, David, and I think, you know, we do that great big Christmas party every year down there. The LIA sponsors and gets hundreds of people coming in and, you know, eating cookies and, yes, having a good time. They, they know the building and, you know, when hopefully they'll, they'll remember it.
It's kind of a funny thing to say, but in life and in places like the Historical Society, you gotta train your replacement. You gotta find and train your replacement. So we're having those types of troubles finding people for the committees in the town. I know everybody hears that. You know, our recreation department, we've had some, some very, very spunky people and they've moved on, you know? The people who have done it for years and years and years have finally said, I need a break, you know? And, and it's just, it happens, it's, the times have changed. The donated time is just not there anymore like it used to be. And we're struggling with it, we're all struggling with it, that, you know, all of these committees are struggling with it. So I don't wanna see this building go by the wayside any more than anybody else does. But we need some ideas, that's why we have you people here. This is tough for us. And when we, when we sat down with her, it was tough, it really was. So, and it's gonna be.
Yeah. Amanda, any final thoughts?
I think we've covered it. I mean, I, I think the conversation's been great and I think that we, we have to consider the historic value of, of any building we have in our community. How we deal with the other piece is difficult to grapple with. We're, we're here to help in that any way we can.
Thank you. I, we, I think, can I speak for all of you and say thank you very much for coming out on a cold January evening and giving us your time, your thoughts? I hope that this isn't the last time that we have a conversation about this 'cause we're gonna be working on it. So thank you all very, very much. And anyone at home has any ideas, please reach out to the town offices. And if anyone wants to start an endowment, call the town office. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Second call.
Seconded, all those in favor? Thank you very much, good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Our Capitol campaign money refund back to the town was pretty good.
Mike's still live.
Rosie.
I know you don't. I know you don't.
What?
Nothing, different, different conversation for a different time.